Call this meeting to order at 7:30. We'll dispense with the pledge again. And is there any comments from the audience for our budget workshop? All right, hearing none, I guess I will turn things over to Kristen for our page by page. Proposal review.
Great. And before we do that, I just want to go over what is in your budget packets that I provided to you. And that included the superintendent's recommended budget for FY26. FY26 Q and A for the budget, projected grants for FY26, recommendation of new open choice seats for FY26, new and enhanced stipend requests for FY26, area superintendent budget requests for FY26, which you saw in my presentation this evening, and BHS current and projected AP N E C E courses. All right, so we are going to start with instructional technology. Is there a way to make that bigger or no, Joe?
I can make it bigger on my computer with my.
Okay, that, yeah, that's great. Thank you. Any questions on instructional technology? I can't see you all, so you're gonna have to unmute and say I have a question, okay? All right. Hearing none, we'll go on to art. Hearing none, English language arts. Okay, on to world language. Okay, on to computer instruction, please. On to mathematics, please.
Sorry, question. I actually had a question for computer instruction.
Okay.
It's actually probably less of a question and maybe more of a suggestion for the program description, which only explains why we're spending money in grades four through eight, but maybe include what happens at the high school and why we're spending $10,000 at the high school.
Good point.
Or at least the offerings that we have at the high school and computer instruction.
Right, for the, yeah, for, well, it's for, it is there, Penn Foster fees for the distance online learning.
I was thinking more, more that the program description implies that we don't have a computer instruction program at the high school?
Well, we don't.
It doesn't say anything, oh, we don't. Okay, so the computer courses at the high school aren't counted under this program? Like AP Computer Science and whatever other.
No.
Computer tech stuff.
No, this is just for virtual high school.
Computer instruction is? Really?
Yeah. Yes. Yep.
But not for grades four through grades eight?
Correct, because we don't offer virtual high school in grades four through eight. So the AP courses and the things like that, you would see like, for example, in the math budget.
AP Computer Science is in the math budget at the high school?
Correct, yes, because it's considered under your, you know, under our board policy. It's, it's one of the areas within math. So it falls into the math budget.
Okay, so is there a reason then? It seems like we're combining two different types of programs here. Because the Penn Foster is not for computer program, for computer programming, right? That's for any online course.
Can I offer, can I offer a suggestion? Think of this not as computer instruction, as computerized instruction. This is online subscriptions and those kinds of things to provide instruction as opposed to teaching in robotics or teaching AP Computer Science, which are in their respective departments.
Okay, and I think I understand that. I'm just asking, why is that type of course? Why, why are these, you know, courses that are instructed over the internet or via computer, which fall into history and, you know, social studies, English, math, under this program, along with the courses that are taught at the center school that are actually on how to use a computer? It just, it seems like you're bundling.
Well, because it's, because we're paying a subscription to one company. We, right, for the opportunity for students to take these specific online courses. And we never know until scheduling is done what students need to take what, if any, online courses based on their schedule. And we're paying the online service for the ability to do that. So we have no way of being able to put it into the various English, social studies, math, science buckets for the high school.
Ah, okay, that makes sense. That makes sense. So it's kind of here by as a, there's no better place to put it, sort of thing?
Well, correct, and from like an accounting perspective, if you will, in terms of our unified accounts, this is where it's supposed to be.
Okay.
Okay, so we are gonna go on to math. Right, hearing none, on to science. All right, I don't hear any questions, so on to physical education and health. Hearing none, on to social studies. All right, hearing none, on to vocational education. Which just a reminder, that's paid for out of the choice grant, but we still have to keep it in our book. Business education. Hearing none, on to family and consumer science.
I have a question.
Oh.
Well, go ahead. No, you first.
The bi-annual fire inspection and the repairs, is that contracted through John?
Joe, do you know the answer to that?
Correct.
Correct, Cassel? Okay.
Yes. Okay. No, I just saw the large increase. Just from experience, my job, a lot of those companies all like merged and they're super expensive, right? They, they doubled their price, but there are some more like local companies. But I could always touch base with John about that. And also for the instructional supplies, I know the teacher travels to go pick up supplies, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Have we ever looked into like, I don't know if it's possible, because I don't know how the cafeteria gets their deliveries? Like piggybacking off of that for both items?
We can't do that.
Okay.
Yep, because that comes in from USDA. You have to order, you know, through certain consortiums and whatnot, and we can't, we can't, like in the buckets, it's like mixing apples and oranges and not allowed.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. Good question, though. Great, if we could.
So my, my question is sort of similar on the first part about the repairs and maintenance increase. What are the fire suppression services? Is that just like a hood? Or do we have like a full sprinkler? Like what is the?
So, yeah, good question. The entire building is fully sprinkled. But in the both kitchen areas, both the one in the cafeteria and the one in the family consumer science, there is a hood with a full ansel system as well, as required because of the stoves in there.
Okay, that's what I was sort of assuming. And the increase, Ashley's comment sort of makes sense that there would be a huge increase if there's consolidation. And I guess I was curious if that ever goes to bid. Like if, like we said, we switch out companies, like if they have a 50% increase like this is for the same thing, then.
Well, John always looks, right, John goes and certainly looks like when we have, you know, big increases, but we've had a lot of big increases in a lot of areas. And certainly, you know, I would encourage Ashley, and I think I have already, right, to reach out to John and, and, and connect with him, you know, if she knows of somebody else maybe we could be using that would cost less money.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Great, thank you, guys. On to music.
I got a quick one here. Also, there's a note about decrease in repairs and maintenance due to decreased number of instruments to be repaired. But it seems to me that we have bought a lot of instruments in recent years. And I'm wondering if the new instruments don't need to be repaired? Or if why are we saying there's a decrease in the number of instruments?
So as a parent who had kids play musical instruments, the older the instrument is, the more repairs that are often needed over time, just due to use. You know, it's sort of like the, anything like in somebody's house, kind of, so to speak. So we do, we have done a good job of replacing a lot of instruments, so.
So we don't have a lower number of instruments? We have a lower number of instruments that need to be repaired?
We have more instruments.
Okay, that's what I was, I thought, because as I'm saying, decreased number of instruments, but it's decreased number of instruments to be repaired, which is what it says, but I just wanted clarification on that.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. On to technology education. All right, hearing none, on to continuing education. All right, hearing none, on to library media. All right, hearing none, on to athletics.
Yeah, Chris, a quick question for me on the online services. I think the Q and A references.
Wait, for which one, Ashley?
For athletics on online services.
Okay, yep.
Of 3,400, the Q and A references, arbiter registration, what does that relate to?
Arbiter sports is the system that we have to use for families to go on and register their students electronically with all of the information needed to play a sport.
So the increase, is this new or is it just every couple of years?
No, we, so we, we, we've had arbiter registration for online sports. There was just a natural increase in that. The, the big ticket item is for the vid swap video services for volleyball, as well as boys and girls basketball. And this new service provides player analysis for improvement, and the coaches and the players love it.
Okay, so it is something incrementally new that we, that we're paying for?
The vid swap video, yes, is new. Right, yep.
I had two questions.
I have one. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Thanks, Fender. So, Kristen, can you confirm that 0% of this program goes to classroom instruction?
Yes, correct, Joe. Right, none of this, yes.
And do we budget any funds for any other types of extracurricular activity? Or do we only support our athletics, extracurriculars this way?
Oh, no, so in, in the teacher's contract, right, we have stipends for all kinds of additional activities that are not sports related. It's just that the, a lot of those activities aren't as, don't cost like athletics costs, because you don't require to have officials and things like that at them. But like, for example, we robustly support robotics, right? And, and, and different things like that.
Another really good example, sorry.
Are you saying that the, the funding for those extracurricular activities, supplies and whatnot that might be used as part of those activities come out of the regular instruction budget?
No, oftentimes we support, well, yes and no, right? It depends, right? Some of the things that they're doing in robotics, if they're doing that in class, we're supporting that through the regular budget. For extracurricular type things, like they need more robotics kits or whatever the case may be. We often use the choice grant for things like that, because we're never really sure what it is they need till kids demonstrate, right, their interest in something particular, or they want to make a different kind of robot, or, or whatever the case may be. I'm just using that one as an example. Joe also wanted to add to that.
I was gonna, and then just two other quick things. Remember the Alltown Fresh donation, Chris?
Correct.
Like that $2,700, that went to a good chunk. We bought a new field for robotics. The PTA loves to support some of our clubs and enrichment. So, yeah, we get money from a variety of sources.
And we've also used Title IV grants as well, year after year, for different types of enrichment, whether it be to be used, for example, like, I don't know, we bought something, clay, clay something. But then the kids were also using it for presenting, you know, putting together their art show, which was happening after school, right? As part of the art club. So Joe also wanted to add.
Yeah, another real good example would be the drama, which is a, you know, because, you know, if you look, you'll see it in my administrative budget, you'll see funds in there for the licensing fees, which are extravagant. You know, a couple of microphones each year, those kinds of things come out of that, that line as well to support that.
Okay, thank you. So, and my second question was, do we offer waivers for students whose families might not be able to afford the $75 pay-per-play?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. And the fact that we have waivers is regularly communicated to students so that they are, and families so that they are aware of that? Or is it something where they have to come forward and ask?
No, it's actually right on the registration page. When students go to sign up for a season, it's right there. And, and a shout out to the Athletic Booster Group that, that actually sponsors scholarships, or however you want to label it, for most of that.
Yep.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the uniforms. Are we replacing them for every team every year? Or like, it's not all that specific, but I, I don't see my kid getting a new uniform every single year, so.
No, yeah, so we, so we don't. So for example, when you look at the uniform replacement cycle, we'll use the high school boys soccer, for example. We purchased them in 2019, 2020, and the replacement year will be next year. So soccer team will get new uniforms next year. Same for girls soccer. You'll see cross country and track, softball. Those uniforms were purchased in 21, 22, and they're up for replacement in 26, 27. So we usually have like a five-year rotating system on it, is how it works.
Okay, per sport. So, so maybe last year was one sport, and then you say, oh, well, it'll be about the same amount next year?
Yeah, we, yeah, years ago. Yeah, years ago, we put this replacement cycle into place, because to be honest with you, when I first got here, uniforms just weren't being replaced and, and we kind of like, look like ragtag system here. And so we put a uniform replacement cycle in place so that it's about the same amount. Sometimes, you know, it's a little more different years, depending upon the uniforms and how many kids. But it's why you see different years listed for when we're replacing them, because we're on that five-year cycle.
All right, all right, thanks. Yeah, it seems like then, I mean, K through eight, I guess, is not nearly as expensive as the high school, but the high school has a lot less people. So is it just a difference in the number of students that play sports? Or they're, they're, they're just much more expensive uniforms for bigger kids?
Well, we have a lot of kids that participate in athletics at the high school. And it's, I don't know, we have a lot of kids that participate, and the bigger uniforms cost more money for bigger kids.
Sure, sure. Okay, thanks.
Yep. All right.
My question is about the professional services, out of curiosity, the CPR first aid research, which went from zero to 1,500, is this like a every other year cost? Or is this a new rule, or was this somewhere else perhaps? $1,500 from zero? It says research, and I know I haven't been certified in a while in first aid or CPR, but CPR used to be an every other year, or an every year thing.
Yeah, so originally that professional services line was the athletic trainer. And the athletic trainer could do the CPR and, and the other piece, research. We took the athletic trainer out of this year's budget, but we still needed monies in there to be able to do those recertifications. And we really need to keep it in there every year, because sometimes coaches change, but we have to ensure that they have those certifications, because otherwise they can't coach.
So the zero was just an unusual year. It'll be 1,500 going forward?
It should be, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious why it went from zero to 1,500.
Yeah, because like the year before, you would have seen $21,000 in that line.
For the trainer, yeah.
Correct, yep. So it was embedded in there, and I, we just, we didn't think that through all the way, so that's why it's there.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so we are.
Just one, I have one, one more question. The, the plaques and the banners and everything, we have to hang up the banners. I mean, is, is that cost included? Or is that like, you know, having somebody hang up the banner, is that in a different bucket of?
No, we hang the banners ourselves. Once we get them back from, once we send them out, get them back, our, our maintenance and, you know, actually Joe, and probably Custodian are the ones that hang them.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I mean, I know like some of the, some of the plaques, right? I mean, the kids get them if they win the state meet or whatever it is. But then the stuff that we make ourselves, for sure, you know, I love that. You walk into the, you know, into the high school, they're on the way to the gym, and you just see all the records up on the right, among the students.
Yeah.
Okay, no, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we are on to special ed. So I'll just say that special ed also continues to be a hot button issue at the state capitol. Area superintendents from small districts met with a number of legislators. And we also had the commissioner of education there with us several weeks ago, where we presented a number of ideas and changes that we would like to see made with regards to how special education is funded in the state of Connecticut, some of which, if you heard anything about the governor's budget, you may have heard there, and you can probably expect to see even more in some bills that I believe are going to be coming forward. So this is where we are for right now.
Yeah, I had a question. So we're showing a significant reduction in tuition for outplacements, but not a corresponding decrease in the transportation, which I would have expected if we're not transporting as many kids to different schools. So what's going on there?
Beth?
Yeah.
I think I can speak to it.
Trying to find my questions. I question, I do have a question. Why is there an increase in student transportation?
Out of district.
You wrote, it's based on an anticipated 5% rate increase.
Right.
Right, but if we're not transporting as many kids out of district, shouldn't there be a
But, okay.
Reduction from current years?
If, if that student who's outplacement or students, and we weren't providing transportation, say their parents were providing transportation, then there would be no change. And there is no change.
There's a $20,000 increase.
I understand that, because that's, that's, I understand that. By change, I mean no decrease, right? Because transportation not being provided, not that it's not provided. If parents choose to not accept the transportation and
Got you, I see what you're saying.
Dial themselves, then there is no cost to the district, and therefore there would be no reduction.
Okay, so that makes sense. However, the increase that is shown is, I believe, more than 5%. So if it's just a 5% overall increase in costs, or cost of transportation, where, where it increases more than 5%, right?
Chris, are you looking down here at the 159? Is that where you are?
Yes, Beth.
Yeah, yeah, so it shows a $20,000 increase, which 20,000 divided by 139 is definitely more than 5%.
There's a, I believe it's the student, there's a student who may be needing transportation next year, which is why there's an increase from this year to next year, a child who's currently does not get transportation.
But who is outplaced?
Was out, well.
Who requires transportation?
Yes, requires transportation.
Okay.
We're anticipating may need it next year. Doesn't currently, but.
Yeah, so that's the part about additional students requiring transportation in her answer.
Right, because I have the 5% increase on additional students requiring transportation.
Additional students, okay, so you could have additional students requiring transportation, but still have fewer students overall going out of district.
Correct. I know that's a little convoluted, but that isn't, that's the case.
Yeah.
It is.
Would it also be because maybe students are traveling farther, or?
No, I think it's just, it's just based on the need right now.
It is based on the need. Anticipated.
Also, under the $90,000 increase for pupil services, so I know we have a 5% rate increase, but then IEP needs for individual students. So is that 90,000 in additional needs for current students? Or is this projected needs based on what you know, students you know are coming into district? That's, that's a huge jump.
It, it is a huge jump. I'm not sure to answer, Kristen, without being identifiable.
Yeah, so, so we have actuals for this year that came in higher than anticipated, than maybe we were originally quoted this time last year, number one for that line. So that's issue number one that we have to account for, right?
And then right there, Chris, I also a student that when we were doing planning, we didn't know about is a particular student.
Correct. So it's twofold there, right? So that's um a significant amount of the cost there. That we need to take care of um as well as um the cost. Um, for the teacher of the deaf. Um, coming in higher, um and we have a number of students that we service that need those services. Um, and we have um added evaluations at BCS based on the number of evaluations conducted over the last few years. Because we are seeing an uptick in evaluations.
Sure, sure. Can you talk a little bit about the increase in costs for the teacher of the deaf? Was that. Because their services were needed more or because it was confusion over what they were going to charge us?
Services change from year to year based on a student's needs.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
Great question. Thank you.
And we also have the services of the teacher of the deaf and an audiologist and depending on the age and. Abilities of a student and the needs, they may need more or less of an audiologist, audiological services from year to year.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, uh, also, just a, I think a typo in your Q and A. The last question under uh special ed, why is there a decrease in excess cost reimbursement? I think it should say fewer students will meet rather than will not meet. Am I correct in that?
No, so.
Well, no.
I think it's, I think they will not meet. So if fewer students meet it, that would mean we would.
Get more money.
Alright, yes, of course, okay.
That's how, yeah, it's how excess costs works.
Yes. I had to think about that one too when we wrote it, Chris. Cassel and I go back and forth on it every year.
And I had to think about it when I reviewed it like three times. I think I went back to them, so.
And I didn't think long enough about it, so thank you for clearing that up.
All good, all good. All right. Other questions on special ed? All right. We're gonna move on then. To extended school year. Hearing none on to tutorial and homebound instruction. All right, hearing none, social work. Okay, uh, hearing none, guidance.
I had a question. Um, I'm curious what we currently pay for Naviance. And is that amount in the budget plus the cost of the new system?
No, we just have the, want me to answer, Chris? I'm sorry if you want to. We just put the cost of the new system in here for this year and we're. Pretty sure that's the way we're going based on the last conversation I had with the school counselors. We're gonna be moving to school links that better suits our needs. They've had a lot of meetings with other districts who are using it. Um, the the transition from Naviance to school links will be seamless and has been seamless in other districts. Um, so we've just included the cost of school links in the budget. It is higher because there's an initial startup fee as well.
Ah, okay. But you anticipate that it will provide increased services for or allow us to provide increased services?
Yes, both school counselors, thank you. Yes, it's gonna be a lot better for the students and an easier platform to to access and. They've been really researching it since we first started talking about it a year ago and they've been in. Groups with other schools who that was like we tasked them, Joe and I tasked them with talking to other districts to find out pros and cons and. Um, when we first started doing budget this year, they were kind of still, well, we're thinking school links, but as my last conversation like last week, the week before, and they're like. It's school links is what they want. So they think it's gonna be really good for the kids and. Just a much better platform.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, moving on to nursing.
I had some questions.
I think I did.
Oh, if you want to go ahead, first question.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the increase, the the ten thousand increase. There, I know it talked about external costs, but I wasn't really following the root of what was driving that significant increase based on the explanation.
That was my question too.
So it says.
If if, I have to be careful here. Um, if a district were to have a student with significant medical needs. That need to be addressed, say, by the nurse and that has to be a one-on-one situation. Then the nurse cannot be providing services to all of the other children in the building during those times of day when that has to happen. So that being said, you need to hire. Uh, someone to either come in and do sort of the um additional needed medical. Piece, say it might be feeding or breathing. Types of thing, I'm just giving you examples.
Specialized interventions.
Thank you, Beth. And so this is based on student need for specialized interventions.
Okay, so forecast.
Medical.
Forecasting for a higher need. This year.
Well, yeah, we anticipate.
Yeah.
Yes.
So is this purely an on-call position or is it scheduled services certain times of the week? Kind of thing. I mean, is it, is it, is it like? A student might need a specialized service, but the nurse is busy with other people and so they call somebody to come in or is?
So it is really dependent on the particular needs of. The student or students who are looking for the interventions for. So we've projected and to be quite honest. Cassel and I really struggled with this because it is a projection for how many hours we will need. So we're hoping that this is going to be. The accurate and appropriate number, but to be quite honest, it may be not enough or maybe too many. Because it really is dependent on um. The health needs of of uh the children who require the service and it would be, it's an agency that we've contracted with. A pediatric nursing agency who can come pretty much um like on call, we can call them. That morning if we need them and say we need you for the morning or we need you for the afternoon and they'll come and support the nurse's office and either. Provide the interventions or cover the office so that the nurse can provide whatever intervention she needs to provide.
I see, okay. Um, and are those services um put out for bid or? Comparing services to find the lowest cost provider or the, well, necessarily lowest cost, but are you shopping those services?
When I was shopping for this to get it in the budget, um, there weren't a lot of, I didn't find a lot of options, so. This particular year, I I did not, I went with. Recommendation on somebody who can do pediatrics. There are a lot of nursing subservices that we've kind of. Used in the past, early on, many years ago. Um, many of those nurses had experience in nursing homes. And other places, but not school or with pediatrics. So we were really looking for somebody in some agency with. Pediatric experience and that's what this agency is and they were able to meet our needs very quickly. Like right now, if we need them, they were able to come on board immediately.
Okay, in that, so just final question, I, we also have a separate budget line for substitute nurses at fifteen thousand dollars. Why? Why aren't we pulling or budgeting this under substitute nurses? Because it sounds like that is what it is.
It it's, hmm, it's not though, um.
Okay.
The substitute nurses, if the nurse at the high school is sick or the nurse at Bolton Center School is sick. We have.
This is more of a, an on-call.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So what was the historical trend prior to twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five? Was it, did it ever significantly fluctuate? It just seems to be. Fluctuating a lot going into twenty five, twenty six.
What, this professional services line here? Because this is based on student needs of students we have today.
Right, right. So have we ever had this level of of need or is this a unusual?
This is the level of need we have now.
Sure, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine.
Okay. Um, moving on, please. To psychological services. All right, hearing none on to speech and language, please. All right, hearing none on to program improvement and evaluation.
Oh, yeah, I had a question here. So I see that the the in-service, the first line uh is decreasing and the explanation is because. We're not sending as many staff to national conferences. Um, if that is the case. Would we not also expect to see a decrease in the travel line?
I believe that um travel line is.
Mine's Monica's contractual travel.
Yeah.
Line by contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
And honestly, if we, if there were a local um relatively local east coast. Uh, national conference again, we would have budgeted for it. So um, this is because this year we sent five teachers to Boston. It was very easy for them to get there. We didn't have to incur uh any flights, um, uh, just hotel and registration. So. It was a great opportunity for them. If something comes up again in the near future, then we will budget for that, but there is nothing pending for fiscal year twenty six.
Thank you. Okay, on to central administration. I'm hearing none on to school insurance.
So there are some fairly hefty increases there. Um. Do you feel that we are getting good value for the insurance products we have? And what is, what is our claims history? Do you, do you track that? I mean, I don't know if it's. Helpful to do so, but. We're paying an awful lot of money and just curious if we are getting, getting anything back.
That's something that we can take a look at. This is a, this is also a joint effort. It's not just us. This is both us and the town. Um, and right now the cap, the the rate stabilization that we entered into. So that we can at least budget for is five percent. This is year three. Of that rate stabilization um contract with them. So in this budget, I've got that maximum of five percent. Plus a three percent exposure. So there's eight percent increase in there. Um. Which. It may come in lower. You know, that the five percent may come in lower and there may not be a rate exposure.
But we won't know that till.
Yeah, but but we don't know that. I mean, it's typically come in lower. There's, it's. It, we've only had higher than um projected. It's rare. Usually when they're giving us that rate stabilization, that's kind of like the cap. And then it can go down from there.
But we have to budget the cap.
Yeah, I budget for that because one year I didn't and um it came in higher.
Okay.
Moving on to building administration. All right, hearing none, moving on to fiscal services.
Can you explain the answer to the first question on the Q and A? I'm not sure what a biannual actuarial valuation. Is and why evaluation would increase our costs?
So this is for the um. The post-retirement um. Disclosure on the financial statements for the audit. So that happens um. Every two years. So we have a regular one that we incur every single year and then. In the biannual, every two years, we also have a bigger, more extensive review. For the, that disclosure. So this is also in combination with the town and this is kind of our guess on what our portion might be.
I see, I see.
We're required to have it.
Yeah, I'm not following the every two years versus the year. I'm I'm familiar with the every, you know, year requirement and the disclosures there. Um. Is it a different set of disclosures or it's uh the same, just a more granular level?
I believe it's same but more.
Okay, maybe we can chat offline about about what that is. I'm just curious, but I do know that they are expensive, so understood.
Yep.
And then I also wondered, um, the business office membership, is that? Would that be like my Amazon Prime subscription that I can use to? I used to be able to get free shipping or whatever.
Yeah, we absolutely, we we utilize Amazon Prime. We 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 order a lot of.
That's, that's what that fee is for.
Correct, because it's a lot cheaper than oftentimes ordering from other places. We save a lot of money.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, on to systems management. I'd just like to note again. How invaluable Novus has been. Um, in spite of this increase, um, I want to thank them and I want to thank Monica for. Uh, managing the uh power school breach. Monica's done a great job. Um, and been right on top of it and Novus has as well and been very helpful. Um, we did, um. I'm not sure if the town did, but we have done our tabletop exercise. We had done it um earlier um. To go over if a breach happened or whatever and I'm thankful that we did that in quick order with them because we were. Far better suited to respond to this than we would have been had we not done that. Um. So. They're also assisting Cassal and looking at E-rate uh potential projects and E-rate money is not sure where E-rate is gonna lie. Um, come the end of this year, but they're still on top of it, so. All right, hearing no questions there, contracted salaries and wages.
All right, I have a couple of questions. So the extended school year teacher salaries. Uh, granted, it's only up, I think, a tiny amount, three hundred fifty four dollars. However. Uh, I noted that the extended school year program budget was cut by thirty three percent. So. If the program budget is being cut by thirty three percent. But you're also, but you're still anticipating the. but you're also, but you're still anticipating the same number of teachers that will be needed? How does that work?
So it's based on student needs. So if we have students from a myriad of grade levels, um, that even though we may not need the supplies per se, because maybe we have them or whatnot, um, for the program part of the budget, uh, we still need the staffing to meet the IEP goals and objectives for these students.
Okay. I guess, to be fair, the bulk of the decreases for transportation and in the program, so.
Correct.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask is, is it possible to get a census of employees with our budget each year? Broken out by, you know, administration, teachers, pairs, that sort of thing.
So can you be more specific on what exactly it is you want before we do that work?
Uh, uh, how many teachers are we paying? How many, how many of each type of staff are we paying?
Got it.
How many people do we employ?
Got it, you got it. I just wanted to be sure I was clear on what you were asking before we did work. Casal, are you clear on what we're, he's looking for there? Okay, thank you.
I think when I first started on the board, you provided me something like that and it was really helpful. So I think if you can just refresh that.
Sure, yeah, we can do that and we'll get that out to you guys for the next meeting. Okay. Any other questions here?
Quick question, um, why is the administration and the business salaries going up like uh, roughly fourteen percent? And then the teachers are only two and a half.
So administrators are down.
Oh.
That's the first line.
Yeah.
That's, that's a decrease.
Yeah, sorry, administrative business for, I guess, yeah.
Oh, wait, where are we?
Sorry.
Um, so you may recall that um, the board made a change um, in the compensation for a business person. Uh, so between that and, and the contractual um, pieces that the board approved, that's that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
You're welcome, good question. Okay, hearing no other questions, we're going to go on to personnel benefits. Then again, we're you know, go ahead, Chris.
Did we ever, did we ever come to any sort of uh, agreement with the town about the dental? The, the self-funded dental insurance and there was like hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in that account? And we were trying to figure out what to do with it. Was that ever resolved?
Uh, no, that is up to the selectmen to resolve because that account sits with them. So that may be a question that um, members of our finance committee may want to ask.
But it's our money, right? Or, I mean, not our money, but it is
collectively.
For board employees.
Not just board employees, it's also town employees, but certainly board employees are the bulk.
Okay.
Of that, however, the board of selectmen are the owners of that account.
We'll ask, Chris. It has come up a number of times and I think there's some investigation that needed to be done there. Um, and we'll see where they are with that.
Thank you.
Oh yes, Jill, every uh, six months and she says, wow, 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 we don't know, and I get the answer, so.
Not for lack of trying, Chris.
I appreciate the effort.
Sure. Maybe Ashley will have more luck than Ria. Okay, uh, on to operations and maintenance.
The Q and A mentions that you're adding maintenance to the HVAC management system. Does that mean that you've purchased a contract for maintenance? Or is this an estimate of maintenance costs?
As maintenance costs.
Okay.
Just based on things that happened this year.
Oh, and, and then also, uh, Q and I, Q and A mentions anticipating needed repairs to zone valves. I thought we were already doing that. Didn't we just approve?
Well, you did.
Transfer to take care of those.
You, well, you did for the ones that we know we need to take care of for this year. John's concern is, is that because of the age of the zone valves, they're going to continue to fail until the whole system is replaced or, or until those pieces are, are taken care of. So he feels that it would be very prudent to have money in there for others that he anticipates will fail next year.
Makes sense.
We really don't want to be in the place we, we are this year, to be honest. Any other questions on operations and maintenance?
Oh, uh, could you explain what we are using tractors? More of? Or why we are using tractors more that would account for the increase in diesel costs?
I think it's, it's just for, to be honest with you, maintenance of the facilities, right? Trying to.
It's almost a doubling of the fuel cost. Are we doing double the maintenance or?
I just think we're doing more of it in more of a timely fashion than maybe we had done previously. As well as the cost of diesel. All right, hearing no other questions, moving on to transportation. Next year will be the last year of the current transportation contract. So that will be another thing that uh, the new superintendent and the board will need to tackle.
Oh, long-awaited meeting of the transportation committee.
Yep.
Uh, does the transportation program, does that include transport for our magnet students? Or is that part of the, the that we paid at magnet schools?
It does not include the cost for the uh, Creken Hartford magnets that's provided by Hartford.
Okay.
Good question, though. All right, hearing no other questions here, uh, moving on to appendix A. Again, that's our Kappa request. Moving on to appendix B. These were all the reductions that took place. All right, hearing none, moving on to appendix C. This is the revenue page.
Does the ECS estimate, does that include the proposed budget cuts? Or the proposed cuts in the governor's proposed budget? Or is this based on last year's budget? Or, I mean, what we, what was passed by the legislature last year?
Casal?
This is not based on the current budget that just came out. This is um, an older number.
Based on information that we'd been given previously about where we would be this year.
Correct, correct.
And do you typically adjust it based on the governor's proposed budget? Or do you wait until an actual budget?
It depends, it depends. Um, if the governor's budget, um, once we get it out, I do usually go in and adjust it. If it's in time, like we find out now, I'll change it so that on your budget, you'll have the governor's proposed budget number.
Okay.
But prior, during the superintendent's budget, we don't know that.
I don't have it before then, yeah.
Of course, yeah.
But it will get adjusted for yours. All, all the pages will get adjusted for any new information when, when it's the board's budget. If it's known before we publish.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next appendix, which is D. Hearing no questions. Appendix. E. Okay. Hearing no questions, moving on to the next one. Okay. Hearing no questions there. Um, Joe, I'm going to have you close that out because I now need to share my screen, please. Give me just a second here to get organized. Okay, uh, what you see here are our um, projected um, choice numbers and our projected Columbia enrollment for next year. And just for new board members, um, if we have sibling requests, we do our best to try to honor those um, as well. Um, so sometimes siblings are in different grades and they're at different schools and the parents want them all at one school or whatever the case may be. So we do try to honor those, but we don't know about those sometimes until very, very late in the school year. Any questions here? Okay, stop sharing that, let me pull up my next one.
Kristen, are the choice numbers stabilizing? I know that they were, they were going down for a while.
Yeah. Honestly, Ria, it's really hard to say. I mean, they seem to sort of be somewhat steady at this point in time, um. But it's a guess from year to year, to be honest with you, it just is.
Because I know that they have more options than they've had.
They have a lot more options than they've had previously, that is absolutely true, yep. All right, sorry, I'm looking for my next piece here. Okay, what you have here are the um, stipend uh, enhancement requests. The first is for the athletic director to increase from twenty-two to twenty-four points. Uh, the reason for that is, is CASC IAC uh, approved having, allowing for um, summer practices to occur with coaches. Um, in the past, that was not allowed um, at all. Um, so now it's going to require some, actually quite a bit more coordination and work in the summer. Um, and this was just to stab at what it might be. We really don't know until it happens uh, this coming summer. So that's the first request. The next request is for the AP coordinator to increase from three to four uh, points. Uh, because this position is now uh, proctoring afternoon exams um, after school time. The next one is for the drama club director to go from four to six points. Uh, we have a lot of kids involved in drama. Uh, there's increased licensing responsibilities that just don't seem to ever go away. They just keep, keep piling on, um. So that's the request there. Uh, robotics um, at both schools. Um, robotics is a hot thing in the Walton Public Schools, which is awesome. Um, but we have an increased number of events and, and looking for, uh, they're looking for, you know, a small increase there um, as well for their point values. And then uh, we have two new ones. One is a chemical hygiene officer um, at the high school. Um, and this person's responsible for the inventory and maintaining all the SDS um, paperwork um, that comes with that. And then the last one is the BHS portfolio coordinator. Um, the, our portfolio program at the high school now encompasses all grades. Um, and that was formerly uh, one of the pieces that um, the dean of students also um, had a large role in as well, so looking for support there. Questions on these?
What's the athletic director doing during the summer? Right off the, right off the bat, the first one?
I'm sorry.
What, what's the athletic director going to be doing over the summer? I mean, summer day is not required. I, I don't know, I mean, they have summer practices of but I, I don't, really don't know what the athletic director is going to do for practices. There's no competitions or anything, I can't imagine there's any coordinating.
Joe, you want to speak to that because you were.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Um, so there's a lot of paperwork, health forms, registration and everything done prior to any season and with the season basically starting earlier, all the registration coordinating with the nurse and all that kind of stuff has to start sooner in the summer. So the athletic director has to work more in the summer. Plus, you know, scheduling gym times and field times and all those kinds of things.
Oh, well, okay, I mean, all, all that same stuff maybe is done earlier, I get it. Um, I, I guess I still don't understand what they're going to do. They're going to, they're going to schedule opening a gym. This is, this is for the summer months. It's like, what is it, maybe ten weeks?
Well, it's usually closer to twelve, fourteen weeks. Um, you know, kind of depends on when we get out of school. But a lot of those things that Joe described will be taking place after the year ends for the athletic director currently.
But those things that were described were not additional work, they're just done at a different time. So you know that I had a lot of reservations about this when we discussed it in the personnel committee and we agreed we would discuss it here. So what I was arguing at the time is we have a rule now that allows a thing to happen. We don't have any evidence, any additional work is going to happen. We just had some testimony that some things might have to happen earlier. But what I said was, at the time, was why are we speculating about what additional time is going to be spent? When we have no idea what time is going to be spent? We don't even know if anyone's going to do. Like, do we really need to schedule field times when there's two teams that are practicing like a couple of weeks before school? Is this really worth a thousand dollars more?
Well, don't we have anything to measure? They had summer practices this past summer.
So did we have any, did, did this happen this last summer? And did we have, I don't know, significant additional time expenditure for this?
Joe, are you able to answer that from the stipend committee discussion?
Um, you know, his requirements for being in over the summer were limited to a few days of registering kids because practices started really that week or so before school. But now the stipend committee felt that if he was going to have to spend more time in the building because things start up earlier outside of, you know, the, the basic contracted time. because things start up earlier outside of, you know, the basic contracted time, that's why we felt a small increase was required. I also don't think that the athletic position stipends points have gone up in many, many years, as some responsibilities have increased. But to Kristen's point, it is kind of an unknown. The stipend committee landed on this as a a starting thing, and they did ask that, you know, if it does go forward, that the athletic director track this summer to kind of see, you know, whether this made sense or not. So we did ask that that take place as well.
So my argument at the time was, why won't we see what actually happens and then adjust accordingly in the future?
Yeah, that would make more sense to me that
Agreed.
You know, have him track this summer, and yes, if there's an increase.
Okay, so do I hear consensus around that one, so I know how to proceed with that one? Can we take them one at a time? I think I'm hearing consensus. Does anybody disagree that there's consensus? Okay, can we go on to the AP coordinator? Any issues there? Okay, the drama club director. Okay. Robotics. For the high school or center school? Okay, I can't see you all, so I'm looking, I'm listening for voices. I'm going with no issues there. Chemical hygiene officer.
This was another one I had asked questions about at the time. So the SDS paperwork, as you may recall, I discussed, like, those are data sheets, so what I was wondering is if we're maintaining SDS paperwork, for instance, at Two Roads, where we use a lot of really harmful chemicals, is a binder that has not been changed in years of time. So I was questioning what the maintaining of SDS paperwork time requirements are, and I think that, I remember hearing that we have new art chemicals that weren't previously being used. And then the other justification is about inventory, and I was curious about who had been doing this before, and whether or not, a lot of it was for art, I believe, and the rest mostly for science. And who was doing this before, and whether or not it was a shared part of their job responsibility, or somebody is sort of taking on a new role for this?
Yeah, I can, I can address both of those. So we update our inventory and re-update that binder, so there's never anything in that binder that we don't have in the building. That's how we work it out. That's kind of the best practice for schools. So that's why every six months or so, that binder does need to be refreshed. That is something that I had done for a few years. The previous chemistry teachers had done some of. We finally got a really good software program that lets us update the inventory. But with no chemistry last year, no chemistry teacher, the chemistry teacher the year prior to that was doing some of this, but did not wanted the, you know, to take on the official responsibility of the entire building. We now have somebody who is willing to do that. So we really haven't met the level of chemical hygiene officer efficacy that we probably should have been, because we didn't have the right person for the role. But we now do.
So this is just BHS. What happens at BCS? With, I mean, do we have most of the same chemicals, or probably lesser?
Yeah, good question. They, they have far fewer chemicals. The software that we did purchase several years ago, we did configure, so their inventory could be added to it as well. And one of the things that I'm gonna ask the chemical hygiene officer to do next year, if this is approved, is to reach out to center school staff and say, hey, you know, here's the, here's the software, keep it updated, you know, how can I help that kind of piece of things? Because the software lives under the high school account, but we did make accommodations to make sure that required center school chemicals could be inventoried there as well.
Why, like, why, if it's an art, why can't the art teacher just quarterly, however often?
Because the SDS binder and all of that requirements and the liaising with the fire department to make sure everybody knows where it is and everything, it's like, it's one binder. So we wanted one person to be responsible for it. So yes, the art teacher has to tell the chemistry teacher what's coming and going, but the actual updating of the software, and as regulations may change with what needs to be printed and not printed, that one individual responsible to making it happen.
Okay. And is this, I mean, I guess, is the fire department, they, did they promote the, this software that we use, or?
No.
I mean, I'm like Andy, we, I work at our restaurant, it's just a binder also. We update it quarterly, gets checked regularly, same, same idea.
So the software we purchased is actually through, I believe it's Flynn, who is our chemical supplier. So it is software specific to schools to keep an inventory that also generates the current SDS sheets.
Okay.
Kristen, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what about the SDS sheets for, like, all the maintenance things for John's guys? Because those have to be included in the book, too. So, and don't, and I, in the fire department, I know I do our SDS book, and we get the sheets in, we get chemicals that come in, they can come in with the SDS sheet. So I'm just wondering if that's been looked at, or my question is, what about John's chemicals? If you're doing chemistry and art, what's happening to all those that are in the building?
That would be a question for John. We're just looking at the instructional side of things.
But it should be, one SDS binder should be in the school for
It's one, it's one physical, yeah, it is in one location. It is. But we don't maintain that side of things. The types of chemicals that we have, especially in chemistry, vary so much year to year, that it's important to keep an updated accounting of how much chemical, and print only the current items that we have. Not just keep adding SDS sheets. That's what used to be done. New chemical would come in, you throw a sheet in it, and you may not even have that chemical in the building anymore.
Okay, so I need some guidance here on this one.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I just was sort of trying to understand what we were doing before and why
Yeah.
we now needed to pay someone to
Yeah, it's, you know, and I get that. Really, the bottom line is the previous chemistry teacher was doing most of this, but didn't want the title, didn't want the responsibility, didn't want the stipend. But the science chair and I really have been looking at this and really thinking that it's a lot of work, and it's some responsibility, and so we thought it would be appropriate to create a stipend for it. It wasn't that the work was never done. It was just that we weren't compensating somebody for that extra out-of, you know, instructional planning time that was taking place.
Okay. Have a person in charge of it, and organizing everything, rather than a mishmash of things. I suppose Beth's question is a good one, because those are chemicals that are in the building.
Yeah, I mean, I know John is responsible for the SDS sheets for all the pieces, you know, on his part, so we can certainly look into seeing if this program, I don't even know if it, you can look into that piece.
Yeah, I guess the other piece, other than the inventory and the SDS, is the management, you know, having somebody, the chemistry expert, know what should be stored in one place versus another, make sure everything is labeled, and all that kind of stuff. That's all part of that same responsibility.
Okay. All right, and then the portfolio coordinator? Any issues there? All right, so what I'm hearing then is we're gonna decrease by the $1,054 and take that out of the budget, so we'll have a a new updated version for you to send out to you before our next meeting on the 20th. Okay?
Yeah, not decrease, just not increase.
Yeah, but it'll be a decrease in the number that we get, the actual number that you'll be voting on.
That's true. Then, as a vague generality on this whole topic, as part of our conversation that we started in Personnel, I had asked, so every year, we kind of go over the stipend changes, and I don't recall ever having stipends removed. But we continue to add them, and we have in the last 10 years, like, what, 100 less people at the high school? But we've never reduced any stipends, but we keep having programs to have more involvement, so are we having more kids involved total than has historically been happening? Or are, like, does the stipend committee review stipends to be cut ever? I mean, when, does that ever happen?
Yeah, so what has happened with that in the past is, like, we've had some stipends, like, for a while, we had a dance team. Then there were a number of years that we didn't have one. And although it didn't come off the list, because we've had interest at times, and then we go for several years, and we might not have interest. I'm using that one as an example. So the money is appropriated, but it's not used, right? But it's there, should students, you know, we've had kids come, it's December, hey, we want to have a dance team, you know what I mean? So if there's that kind of interest, we've, we've kind of hung on to things, if you will, right? But there may be times when, like, I'll use that one as an example, a few years back, like, we had a ton of kids in indoor track. Well, we had a coach and an assistant coach, but we needed another assistant coach, because we had three different sets of things happening at any individual meet, and we needed coaches at different spots, because there were so many kids. So instead of using the dance money, because we weren't having dance group, we use that for an additional assistant coach to support the needs of the program that year.
Okay, so basically, that money is still budgeted for, but not necessarily being spent, but it's not cut from the stipend budget?
Correct, because we just, because a lot of times, like I said, it's just based on student interest.
Yeah.
Right? We don't want to
Say, like, say, like, a few years from now, all of a sudden, the running community decreases in Bolden, and the indoor track team doesn't need the assistant assistant coach, and maybe doesn't even need the assistant. So then, is that money also not being spent, or do we ever reduce, like, from five?
Right, well, so that money wouldn't be spent.
Four point three points.
No, that money wouldn't be spent, and it would be money you're returning to the town if it doesn't happen.
Okay. So it'd still appear in the overall stipend number, but just not be ever spent, okay?
Correct, yep.
Thank you. I was sort of seeking clarity on that whole thing.
No problem. Good question. All right, so the next thing I have to share are our projected grants for next year. And again, this is our best guess right now. Things are a little in flux right now, so this is our best guess. Any questions here?
Nope, no questions from me.
Thank you. I can't see everybody, so thanks. All right, I'm not hearing any, so I'm gonna stop sharing. Okay, so we'll make fixes to the proper pages based on that one enhancement that isn't going to happen. Anything else? If, you know, if we have an update about insurance and it gets better, we will certainly provide that update at the next meeting, although I don't think we're gonna have anything in time for the next meeting. I think the next time we're gonna have something is probably around the time that the board will be presenting a budget to the Finance Committee, and we may not have it in time for that meeting. And, and we shared that, Ria can speak to that, we shared that at Kappa the other night.
I just want to clarify that two points for the athletic director cut is only gonna be $944, because that's the 472 times two. That thousand you saw was to change from current year to next year, so it's a bigger number. Because each point is 472 in the current budget, so you'll see a decrease of $944.
Okay, close enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, anything else tonight?
Well, overall, it was a very easy budget to follow, so thank you, Kristen, and Gossel and team, as always. You know, a lot of it, we don't have a lot of control over. A lot of it is contractual salaries and wages. I think it's a a good starting point, and, you know, look forward to the discussion with the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the Q and A. It was very detailed, as always. We still managed to ask some questions, but headed us off on a lot of them, I know.
Which is great. We appreciate the questions. We try our best to anticipate, but we can't possibly anticipate them all. And we appreciate the fact that you're very thoughtful in your process, so thank you for that. All right, you don't have anything else. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ashley.
No, I was just gonna say, thank you.
Thank you. So you'll need, yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
So I heard Ria make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ashley.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I think I heard everybody. All right, well, thank you, administration, for being here for our two meetings.